Okay.
Okay. So before we get into, this is a workshop for the consideration of the zoning map. Before we get into the actual agenda, which is the 2019 zoning map, the 2023 future land use map, and Cecil Township zoning uses comparison chart. It was brought up to the board, and rightly so, that one of the things that we need to consider when we're consider, before we consider some of these land use maps, are updating some of our ordinances. So we've been talking about a number of them for years, some of which we've even started, and just really haven't moved forward on any of them. And quite frankly, it's caused us some issues in the past because it's, our ordinances aren't always clear, or they don't have clear definitions. So we really need to start going through them. As I told a resident the other day, we can't right now go through them all. We need to touch them all at some point, but we can't do it right now. So I think the first thing we need to do is from the board, just have some suggestions of ordinances that we're gonna update, that we need to update. And then we can kind of have Jack help us walk through getting model ordinances. There's model ordinances from PSATs from the state that we can kind of bring in, have Gretchen get involved, looking at them, and get some actual rules, or not rules, ordinances on the books that we can follow on that make sense and that keep us kind of out of lawsuits that we've been in the past. So if there's any that you think need to be updated, speak up now. I know right off the bat, noise has been one that's been, there's actually been an ordinance that was floated around by you, right Gretchen?
Yep.
I didn't want to bring it up, but if you need it, resend to you. We can have Jack resend it to you. But that's something to take a look at, is the noise ordinance. I think we need to take some action on it. I think Gretchen, you would agree, that's caused us some issues in the past. Not just related to like oil and gas development, but noise like overall, across the whole board. And so we need to update that ordinance. Any other ordinances that need to be addressed or touched?
Yeah, I wanted to mention a couple of things.
Go ahead.
As Cindy said, we were talking about some of the issues we've had with some of our ordinances. And we've had many solicitors for the township through the years, but it seems like Gretchen is, has the better grasp of any solicitor I've ever worked with on the nuances in the ordinances and things that need tweaked, just so that there's no, or less and less causes for interpretation. And whenever there's an interpretation, our zoning officer, our code enforcement guy, or the township, we may make a decision on a, the way we interpret an ordinance. But the law does say that if a landowner has a different interpretation, which is reasonable, or which is not unreasonable, and we have opposing interpretations, we have to yield to the interpretation of the landowner. So I mean, that's not good for them, and it's not good for us. So I think with Gretchen's help on all of these, I think we can get rid of those parts in the ordinances that cause us grief and cause our zoning officer grief. And even our zoning board, they have to make a lot of decisions based on interpretations that, you know, could be clearer. So I wrote a sheet up, just I started with definitions though. I passed them out to everybody, and Jack has one he can put up.
Well, hold on, hold on, we're not there yet.
Well, I mean, I got zoning things in there. I'm just gonna bring up, I'm not trying to come up with any solutions, I'm just giving a list of-
Well, before we get to this though, this definition is specifically related to zoning.
We're not gonna, no, it's just an example. I just want to go through that as an example. I'm not talking about any definitions right now.
No, no, but we're still, I want to make a list of the ordinances.
Okay, I have some down here that I thought, and that's what I'm trying to get at, that how to suggest to the board members to come up with their ideas of ordinances that needs reviewed and looked at again. Yeah, that's, okay, it's, I have definitions first, but I'll go down another page to zoning. I know that interstate highway plan development district we created, I think it was our biggest mistake in zoning to allow residential uses in that zoning. You know, we have, we have two, no, two interchanges, interstate interchanges in our township. And obviously, they're valuable for commercial and industrial tax base. But as you know, there's a developer that's proposing a bunch of residential units in that, in that South Point interchange area. And I mean, he's in his, his application in already. But I think we gotta revisit that, and I really don't think we should have residential uses in there. We have a few pieces of property that are vacant near the new interchange by the toll road, which has access to that Cherry Brook Treatment Plant. Our municipal authority owns that, so they have access to that area, that they might be able to have a sewers and water right there. So we should consider something there. But even PRDs, we need to look at our PRD ordinance. I know our fire departments and even residents have stated concerns about only having one access. You know, we've got to visit that. On our noise ordinance, it's just one part of our chapter 16 under the environmental performance standards. But that's the one we, it's the toughest to enforce, it's the, we get the most complaints about it. And it's the one that, again, I think Gretchen has helped us with one as a model ordinance, but we've never adopted it yet. So I mean, we gotta get on that one. The drilling ordinance, after all these years, I mean, John Smith wrote it years ago for us, and it just, it's something that needs revisited, just because things have changed in the industry. And rather than trying to negotiate things in, I think our ordinance could be updated, and then it might be more clear cut for any applicant that comes. And the property owners involved will know what's gonna be involved. And the last thing, any non-conforming uses that are listed in different areas, we've got to look at that, especially for uses and structures. Because obviously, we have that issue up on, in McDonald on, in Jumbo area. What's their road out there?
West End.
West End, yeah, we have that area, and I mean, there's multiple ones. So what we need to do as board members, you need to look through your notes, or any, any areas you saw where we've had an issue with, that was just tough to deal with, that's what you gotta bring up, and that's the ones that we'll put on the list and we'll go over. I listed those couple areas of zoning, but I know you guys will know more. So just, when you're home sometime, just look through that area, and just recall when we've had issues on different, in zones, and then, you know, we can bring them up for discussion. I just mentioned definitions, just for an example. We just need to clean up some of those, like I listed. There's, they've been putting in contentions for residents for, and our zoning department, especially Liz, for the last couple of years. And this is our opportunity to review and, you know, read the definition and come up with your best idea of what should be changed in it. I think Gretchen will be good at-
Well, hold on, hold on. Before we do that, like I think, don't you agree it makes sense to have Jack get us some model ordinances? Instead of all of us sitting down and just writing stuff that then has to be combined? I think it makes sense for Jack-
Well, I mean, we all have to have input in it, that's what I'm saying. If you know something in specific, get it to him. I don't mean necessarily, if you get it to him, then he'll incorporate it into the comments, and we'll be able to talk about it. But I'm just saying that the way this works is, all the board members are gonna participate, and just give us your ideas.
Right, but I think it needs to go to a central place. Like I think it needs to be, it needs to go to Jack. And Jack, if you can, Tom, did you give this to him? Does he have this list?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Just an example though.
Yeah, no, I think these are good, but like, if you could even just pull up for us, see what you can find from PSATs, some model ordinance for these, and put them into like, I don't want to say categories, that's the wrong word, but like, into like groups so that we can look at ordinances on the highway plan development district, rather than us just shooting a bunch of comments. You get those to us first, we can comment on those, we can add stuff in, and then you can incorporate it into like one document with Gretchen's help.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm gonna sneeze. Sorry. But that way, it's organized, because sometimes in the past, we just like send stuff, and then it never turns into anything. So I want to make sure we're doing it in an organized way. Make sense? Board members, good? Okay. Anybody have anything else besides what Tom mentioned? Which is the interstate highway plan development district, a PRD, shared parking issued noise ordinance, drilling ordinance, or non-conforming properties/uses structures? Anybody have anything else they want to add to the list? Jack, if there's any that you think of, like as you're going through zoning and planning that have come up repeatedly as issues, maybe talk to the zoning hearing board members, see what's coming before them. I think the more things that we can update and stay on top of, the better. Okay, thank you. Okay, now on to the 20- Yeah, can you just stop to the microphone though, because we're recording it?
I mean, this is kind of a random one, but I don't know if the livestock ordinance, I don't know. A lot of people have been wanting now, more recently, to keep chickens and keep goats and things like that, and that wasn't really a thing probably when they initially put these ordinances together.
We have one, we updated an ordinance, like what, eight years ago related to-
I mean, I read through it, it's, I don't, I mean, I think it's probably just worth looking at again to see if there's anything that needs to be changed. On the one that I have access to that's online, it, it has like handwritten stuff inside of it. Like, I'm just, I don't know that it addresses the issues with the chickens and the goats that people were wanting to do now. I'm just saying it's probably worth taking a look at it.
We can look and see, because I know for a fact, when I was first on the board, maybe eight years ago, that was like a big issue that came before the board. And I know we decided, what was it, four chickens per acre? Per acre, no roost or something? Like there's specific rules around it, and we addressed it, like maybe eight years ago. So let's make sure we get you the-
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure if what I was looking at was the most recent thing for sure.
I'm not sure, but we can make sure you have it.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
We have that issue with horses as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I just remember that, because that was one of the very first things that, as a board member, that we addressed, huh? Yeah, yeah, she did. Elizabeth brought it up, the whole chicken debate. It was a very hot topic. Okay, so, so that's good. So other than that, and we'll get you that, I think we're done with the, we'll work through the process of updating those ordinances, it's not gonna be fast. And then moving on to the actual workshop tonight, which is the first, is the 2019 zoning map. Does Dan have a presentation, or is he just, is he just gonna listen in and answer questions?
I don't have any, I don't have any presentation.
I didn't think so, I just wanted to double check before we moved on. Okay, Tom, do you want to start with?
Yes, I think on the comprehensive plan map, the proposed map, we've shown some proposed changes. I really think we need to concentrate on the commercial and industrial areas that have water and sewers available, because those will be the first to develop. I know there's a lot of areas that have water and sewer for residential, but believe me, we have enough developers, they'll take care of that and find those areas. I think we've got to expend our efforts on looking at areas. I highlighted a couple on this map that Jack's starting to put on it. I think that area by the Muse Slate on property, old ABB property, I think that's the first one we really got to consider to get taken care of. We have a potential developer there, and that's gonna be, you know, to fortify our industrial tax base right there, so-
I wouldn't say it's potential, I mean, there's a developer there, right?
Right, that's what I'm just saying, that we have to get that zoning changed to accommodate that. There's a second area by South Point that has two parcels that actually have water and sewer on them. And that area could be the next part to develop. South Point is-
Where?
Adjacent to the Ironwood section, that's part that we showed that goes up towards Burnside Road. I'm sorry, Pap Road.
What's the access to it?
Off of Klinger Road. I mean, the developer would have to improve an access, but I know Crown Castle, at one point, they talked about trying to get an access down to Klinger Road, and they just didn't see it was practical, because they didn't own property that would have accommodated it. So maybe if that property would develop, you know, they would have a joint entrance into that area right there, because there's something like-
So like past the reserve entrance?
The reserve, yeah, yes, across the road from the reserve, that area. But I'm just saying that there, I don't know that there's any-
So like where Darlene owns?
Darlene and Lewandowski, they own a bigger parcel that goes almost up to Pap Road. Actually, it does go up to Pap Road. But I'm just saying, I'm just trying to highlight areas that have water and sewer, that could be a primary develop in the near future. Like I said, South, well, wait, South Point has, it's-
Where's the store? Right on my property, right now? I don't know it. Yes, it is. Oh, come on, Ron.
It is on there.
I sold that property to the Piatt.
It's not on your property.
Yes, it is.
All right, the South Point, every parcel's-
Did you see it?
It's South Point-
You're causing not the problem, don't cause nothing here.
You don't, you don't.
Okay, okay.
All the parcels in South Point are taken, all the buildings are built in South Point. So whatever tax base we got out of this year, we're not gonna get a dime more next year. It's gonna be the same amount, because it's built out.
Yeah, but what are, I mean, quite honestly, South Point's not at full capacity. I wouldn't even, I don't even know if it's at 50% capacity. So I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but is it, like, we want to make actual parcels that can actually be developed into commercial uses? Because we need the tax base. So I'm not opposed to doing that, but is it, in reality, is it actually going, what would go there?
But see, when a building's up, once they're assessed a tax value, if they only have half, if they're only half full, they still have to pay the real estate tax bill. They don't get a discount because they're not fully rented out. Now, maybe we won't get as much from wage tax if there were more employees working inside there, in those spaces. But with the, the real estate tax base is still there.
That's not what I'm saying though, what's the draw? Like if we're saying, hey, you know, we made that parcel by the reserve commercial, but the parcels that are already developed in South Point aren't full, what's the draw to put another building or a commercial development?
Well, that's what, it's a future plan. I mean, things, hopefully, things will turn around, but at some point they will. But if it's still residential, no developer's gonna look at it. That's the idea.
People built them big houses along there.
They're, are you being along-
Klinger Road.
Well, Klinger Road's a residential street.
But that doesn't help us, that's the point. Like, we need the tax base now. So we need to look at parcels of property that can actually be developed into commercial development now.
Wait, we're looking at just properties that have water and sewer. That area up on Rising Road near the new toll road that goes up across from our new development there. There's some commercial property there, it has water and sewer available. So that's the area we got to consider too. Any area that has water and sewer, that's commercial industrial, we should change as soon as possible. We can worry about all the new mixed-use zonings that go along, because that's mostly residential, and I told you, residential developers are gonna take care of that without our help. I'm just saying that any area that has water and sewer, we've got to consider to have it ready if a developer comes along. And that's the only way we're gonna be able to keep the taxes steady, because we're out of development in commercial and residential.
I mean, okay, so-
One more thing, then, like that new ABB property, we can't let that sit and wait till we go through all the mixed uses and all the comparison charts and all the zoning changes and the ordinance changes, and then do it all at once. As we get an area ready that we all agree is ready to go, we should have our hearing on that and take care of that piece of zoning. And then go, you know, keep working on the next ones. We just can't wait for, let this drag out for two years, and then all of a sudden wait, you know, push to get all the zoning changes when everything's done. It can be an ongoing process.
Okay, so, don't you, don't get mad at me on this. But we've been ripped up one side and down the other for putting public works on Klinger Road, because we are ruining the area for the people that live on Klinger Road. I mean, literally ripped apart about it on social media by you, Darlene, too. I'm not opposed to what you're saying. I'm not opposed to your property being zoned commercial. I actually agree with Tom that we need to take advantage of the areas that are zoned, or that have water and sewage. But isn't that the complete opposite of what you've been arguing? You've been arguing with us for two years about putting our public works building on Klinger Road, and now you want your property zoned commercial on Klinger Road?
It really don't make one damn bit of difference to me either way, to be honest with you, because I'm not planning on selling it. Okay? Now, the other thing about it is, there is city water and sewage on that property. That was part of the agreement when I sold it to Piatt back in 1994. I would not sell it to them until they brought city water and sewage across the ninth hole, I think it's the ninth or the thirteenth hole, on that golf course. Ronnie Flair knows it, everything.
Well, I'm not worried about that. If you're saying there's, if you're saying there's water and sewage-
You know everything.
If you're saying there's water and sewage, I'm gonna take your word for it at this point. It's your property. My point is, you argued and argued and continue to argue with us, and-
I told you, I don't care what you do, okay?
Okay.
All I'm saying right now, it's SD. It's right next to South Point with Crown Castle. If Crown Castle comes to me and says they want that property, darn bet you I'd sell it to them. If they want to expand.
Okay.
And it's special development, right next to it. I don't want more homes out there. I want industrial or commercial.
Okay, my point, well, I'm not talking-
Well, that's my point right now, Cindy.
Okay, I hear you. I hear what you're saying. My, my point is, we need to find actual areas to zone-
That's what we're doing right now.
Hold on, let me finish. Actual areas to zone where people will actually come and develop, because that's what we need.
And if they come and develop, this is a commercial or industrial.
If we want to keep our tax base low, we have to have commercial, because you know residential is very expensive, and without commercial to balance it-
That's the reason why I wanted industrial or commercial. As SD, right next to South Point.
Okay, then, can I, can I ask you not, can I ask you not to come at us then about the public works? Because you're gonna put a, a commercial development on Klinger Road, which is a huge contradiction to what you've been arguing for years.
The fourth area that I saw that I designated was along Georgetown Road, right by, right above the Delivate Farm. That was proposed to be, to change the zoning to a commercial zone. And it will, it doesn't have water and sewer right now, but it-
Wait, I'm sorry, I was writing it down.
Above, on Baker Road, above Delivate Farm. It doesn't have sewers right now, but it'll be available once the pump sta, once the Teodori Treatment Plant becomes a pump station. It's underway right now to become a pump station, so it will have capacity for that area. So developers might look at that. I mean, Teodori Park is completely full. That's kind of an extension by Black Box to extend the Teodori Park. So I'm just saying, that's an area that has water, and will have sewer, that we have to look at, at in the future to change.
But we have to be careful, because we just put a weight limit on Baker Road.
Seven ton.
Yeah, so if we're making it commercial, commercial or industrial, they can't come from the interstate on Baker Road to get to access it.
No, they'd have to come from the state road, from Georgetown.
Right, so again, we're picking an area that we just restricted.
Yeah, that's a through road, that's a residential street. It abuts the Black Box, so I mean, it'd be a natural expansion. Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't know if a developer come along anyhow, but if they ran a sewer line up to that property, it'd benefit those residential areas right around on the top of the hill there by, where Aragonese live and Savavic lives, and those couple houses right there.
I know what you mean, I'm just saying, like, from an access perspective, we just limited it.
It has water and sewers, and it's proposed to be in, in commercial. So I'm just saying, we've got to consider that, to have it ready for that. The road itself, it's can be extended, or improved to that, where that development would be right there. And I'm not proposing the whole road be changed, Baker's a residential street. That area could be access to that new property.
We're gonna, if we would do that, you're gonna have an issue with people who don't follow the right pathway and are gonna take Baker Road and ignore the way.
Yeah, we'd have to deal with that. But I'm looking at areas that could help our tax base, that's all I'm pointing out right now. And the last one I just want to mention was by the interchange, the new interchange with the toll road, up by that other end of Baker and the South Fayette end of Fosse Church? Not Fosse, yeah, Fosse Church. We showed some areas to be changed to commercial there, so that does have water and sewer, so that's another area. And those are only four areas right now that I know that we can, do have the water and sewer that are proposed to be zoning, zoned commercial.
What's the other one that we're applying on there?
Oh, one, two. That was, oh, I mentioned that area by Silver Creek, across from Silver Creek. We showed some, yeah, Rising. So that area has water and sewer, so. Alls I did is looked at designated areas that have water and sewers that the map proposed to be commercial. I'm just saying, we can't wait till we do the whole comprehensive plan redo. We have to, we can do it progressively. Designate some areas that we all agree to change, and then change the zoning on those, and then keep working on it through the years.
My, my only concern is, like, we need actual, like, we need actual commercial. And looking at everything that you propose, it's like long-term, like really long-term, before they change them.
But that's what brings, the developers, they will, they will come and ask, where is their commercial property developed? If we don't have it, we're gonna say, sorry, we're thinking about changing that. You know, that just doesn't work. That's what, that's what the plan is.
Is there anything that can be changed that could be developed in the near future?
Well, probably the first one would be that ABB property. So I'm saying, you can't wait for that until we do all the rest of the map. At some point, we have to sit down and say, okay, let's have a hearing on what we've accomplished so far. And then get that part done, and then keep working on the map.
Your suggestion would be to update these five?
No, 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 I was just pointing out five areas that have water and sewer that the map proposed to be commercial. I'm just saying that, it doesn't have to be all of them, or it might only be one of them, but I just say, once we agree on any area that has a potential for development, we've got to, you know, have our hearing and change it. And it might be just that one initially.
You mean ABB?
ABB, right. It's, right now, that developer cannot develop the way it is right now.
He hasn't complained, yeah, I'm, because he's been before us a bunch of times, he's never asked, or-
Well, sure, it was just, proposed to be changed industrial, BPD right now. The current map, the property that he's asking for, and I think he came to our meetings on the comprehensive plan, and it got, it's proposed to be changed to industrial right now.
He wasn't at our comprehensive plan meetings?
Sure he did, yeah, he was here.
I don't remember him being here.
I don't either.
He was here at the last couple meetings.
He didn't want his zoning changed.
Yeah, I thought that too. We might need to like ask him before we're doing this, because I'm fairly certain he does not want the zoning changed.
To his over on Burnside, I know it's industrial, he said.
His is, right, right, what he owned, what he bought from ABB, that was BPD. That's not industrial, he says he needs it as industrial. Now, the map shows industrial, I didn't come up with that.
Before we're changing his zoning, can we reach out to him? Yes, we can reach out to him.
For, is any industrial for a business park?
No, it does not have to be industrial for a business park.
That's not what he wants to do.
Yes, it is.
The BPD is like an office park.
That's what he wants.
He wants to build Business Park Warehouse.
Right, but what was that big company, he said he wanted, he has-
Sarah.
Oh, I know, but, but that's, yeah, but that's not, but that's long-term.
That's industrial.
No, I think they want an office building.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't want an industrial use there.
Well, then why was the map, it's currently-
It's still the same.
BPD, orange. Hey, Dan, you're up on that, what's that ABB property?
Right here, so ABB would be, I think, mixed use, I think. ABB would be like right here.
You're muted, Dan.
It would either be a commercial, yeah.
Can you hear that? Is the question, what's the zone on the ABB property?
Yeah, it's BPD.
What's the proposed zone, Dan, not what's the current zone?
The proposed-
It's the purple and, or, it's either the purple or the striped area along Muse Bishop Road. Yeah.
Yeah, it's proposed to be purple, so we're keeping it I. A portion of it is I, and the rest of it is supposed to be zoned. It's the mixed-use commercial.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Yeah, it's this big purple area.
But it also is this, that where we have the mixed-use commercial.
No, Dan, look at the map again. Where I put that big one on it, oh, it's not on that, your map.
Well, Tom, we didn't take away any of the industrial. I think John wanted to keep his, he professed that he wanted to keep it industrial.
The ABB property is currently zoned BPD. I don't mean his property along Burnside Road, his has always been industrial. The ABB, because currently BPD, the new map shows industrial.
Okay, I can't, Jack, do you have it up there? Can you put it on the screen?
I have the-
I want to make sure I have the right, I was trying to look at another map on another computer.
That's okay.
This right here.
There, there you go.
There's Muse, and there's a village right there, that's, that's-
Can you see that, Dan?
That's costing, testing property along Burnside Road there.
I can't, I can't, okay, I see it's purple, yes.
Right there.
Then it's industrial.
That's what the purple is, right?
Yeah, he wants it industrial.
And that's the proposed map, right?
Matter of fact, they're better not change these, aren't they?
We would have to make that like a light, because that runs right up against Musco.
I know.
It's all industrial.
So like, you realize the parents of the 800-plus kids that go to Muse Elementary are gonna lose their mind if we-
I, I agree, that's why we put it BPD.
So why would we propose- So why would we prop- I didn't notice that until just now, but like, why would we propose that to be industrial right up against an elementary school and a village?
It was proposed by the applicant, the property owner.
But we don't actually, I don't, I need to check with him, because I don't actually-
Frank said the same thing, he said he wants it industrial.
Yeah.
That's what I was told, he, he told me a year ago, that he needed to be industrial.
Yeah. That's what he told me.
But he wants to be like a light industrial, not, we need to define that, if we're gonna change it.
That is I one, it's, it's proposed as I one.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, it's proposed to be I one, it's BPD right now.
We might as well rent an auditorium if we're gonna change that.
Well, I don't disagree with that, I'm just saying, that's what the request was, and that's what got approved on the map. That's what Dan was directed to do, and it was mostly because of that Maserro Corporation.
Well, I wouldn't, we keep saying, we, don't say that publicly, but like, because that's not done, but like-
I'm talking about him, not us.
Yeah, but like, I'm just saying-
We weren't moved by that, he was.
Right, but like, I'm just saying, like, they, I thought what they wanted was a BPD or a light industrial.
It was, it's been BPD for the last nine years.
But we don't actually have to make that change, like-
I, I agree. I mean, I don't disagree with that.
Uh, yeah, I think that would be, we would literally-
But do you agree, though, that it right now is proposed to be industrial, that's the purple, and it, the current map, it's BPD? Here's the current map.
Yeah, I, I mean, I see that.
This says right on it, BPD, it's that orange right there.
Huh?
Can you bring up the, the current map?
I will.
Jack's gonna bring up the current map. There it is, I see one. It might be, I can might just share it, or you can.
We can't ma- I mean, I can't tell you what to do, like, you guys are all, I, I hear what you're saying, I don't disagree with it.
Well, we're not even watching, see what it is, uh, on the big map.
I see, I believe you, I know.
No, I want you to believe, I want you to see it, because you did believe it.
I do believe you, I'm saying that we, I can't tell you what to do, you're all individual board members. I, you cannot put industrial backed up against a school, backed up against residential like that. Like, we could have taken out, I mean, it's too late, I guess we, it's not too late now, because this proposal is not definitive, but like, why wouldn't we cut this? So that it's not right up against Muse.
We could.
We'd have to.
It says zoning should follow either some natural barrier, like a railroad, or a stream, or a property line, or some natural barrier, but we do, we could, uh, section them like that. To leave a buffer, because commercials, or BPD is considered a buffer for industrial, because BPD is all office, uh, park.
Right. We need to call the app.
And it doesn't allow, BPD doesn't allow any residential either, which is good. That's what all that Cool Valley property is, is, uh, BPD.
Well, well, which causes him a problem, because part of the plan for Cool Valley is that residential.
Well-
I don't agree with it.
Because we, this, the touch, changed that on the interstate side to that, uh, interstate highway planned development district, which was, it's the brand new district we created for that interstate highway property for Sabatino. And then allowed residential, and I said, that, I said, I was a part of that, but I think it's a big mistake now putting residential in interchange area.
I mean, this is a whole separate issue, but we can't let them put residential at the back of a development where you can't get out except for residential.
You think we're gonna get that map, or?
We'll have it in front of you, I gave everybody a copy of it, so.
That's his property right now, BPD.
I know, that's what I was saying.
So that's, that's Muse area, and this is his current industrial area. No, that's, that's, uh, what you called.
A Burnside Road.
Burnside Road, yeah.
So that-
This is the school property right here, so that's all the village.
So we added all of them.
Yes, yes, see that, it's all purple, his, his always was.
Yeah, because I can see that. That's not a good idea.
So great, well, that's why we're here for this.
I mean, can we go back and?
That's why we're here, to discuss those kind of things, to pin this down now.
I don't know how I missed that, but like, we can't, we cannot, I, I can't speak for you. I will not support industrial backed up against the school, ever. I don't know how, any of the rest of you can speak up, Darlene, thoughts?
Uh, make, talk into the mic.
I said, do you have any thoughts on this?
On what, on, on Koski's property?
No, on like the whole industrial backed up against a school.
I think it's far enough away from the school, I mean, there's industrial going, uh, there's traffic going all, every which way, I mean, it's, it's a main highway, it's a state road, and if, uh-
Muse School Street's not a, I'm talking about backed up against Muse School Street. It's not on Muse Bishop Road, Muse Bishop Road is here. I'm talking about this parcel here that backs up-
That BP, that BPD?
No, it's industrial.
The proposed industrial does abut the school property, their, their whole common line is industrial to the school property, it's, it's clear as you can see on the map.
Here, look.
The existing building on the school property.
No, it's existing BPD against the school property.
You're looking at the existing map, I'm talking about this one. This is the property that's industrial. This is the property that's industrial, this is Muse School here.
Yes.
So the industrial property, so this is Muse School, this is the industrial property, you can't have, you need to like section this up.
Well, we can section that off, but also that Burnside Road, uh, that has, that John Kalakoski has, now that Trinitia is, uh, uh, renting, it butts up against the school also.
No, it doesn't.
Huh?
There, there's a buff, there's a buffer of BPD, here's, here's the current map. That buffer comes into the school property, so I, I one does not touch the school property, it will on its proposed, it does on its proposed map, it does not on the current map.
Right. Okay. We got totally separate, but we need to talk to Trinitia about running mud, well, no, this is unrelated, but-
That's why we're here.
About him driving mud onto Burnside Road.
Oh, oh.
If you step to my microphone.
So, at least in my opinion, part of the problem is that the new future land use zoning map combines light industrial and heavy industrial, and doesn't have a BPD, from what I looked at on that map. So, if, if you're not gonna add another zone to future land use, then, because quite frankly, light industrial is what's defined in BPD. Like, some of the manufacturing of things and assembling of goods, that's light industrial. I don't think there would be as much of a problem with light industrial than heavy industrial in that area. But with the way, the zones you have there now, there, there's really no, no choice. So you're either gonna have to add another zone, or you're gonna have to change something else, I agree with you, I don't think, am I wrong?
Yes. Um, that, that map feature you're seeing here, it, it doesn't include all of our zones, it doesn't include I two yet, it will, because it, it, it's a future map. This one obviously has our I two, it has our BPD. So, if this map was gonna be our map, BPD and I two would be added, there's R one, we still have R one, R two, R three.
I was under the impression that the, what's in the comprehensive plan and the zones is what we were talking, because industrial says light and heavy industrial. So you're saying we're gonna have all those, and we're gonna have all the ones that are on the original zoning?
We may, we'll always have these, we may have some of those.
No, well, we would, we need to go through each of them and say, yes, we're keeping this, no, we're eliminating this, we need to go through the definitions.
Because I think it freaks everyone, I'm just talking from a novice's perspective, but it freaks everyone out if you say industrial. But if you look at what light industrial is, like assembling of goods in a, in a building, like making soap or some, I don't know, maybe not, that's not a good example, but like assembling things, um, no like actual manufacturer of goods per se. It, that's where it gets scary, when there's like toxins and all that kind of stuff, that's possible, but, you know. So I guess what my point is, is that I think that we need to delineate either if it's with a BPD, or if it's with light industrial, being separate from heavy industrial, but I, I agree that I don't think we should have anything near the school that allows for, but against the school that allows for heavy industrial, for sure.
The cure, this chart will always be there, we're gonna add the, the new zones we created, it'd be added to this, we're not eliminating BPD, it's still all over the map.
Okay, because I didn't, yeah, it's, yeah, it's not in there. I guess that's the other issue, sort of before we talk about what we're gonna change things to. We don't even know what the defin, like, I don't think, at least I'm not clear based on what's in the comprehensive plan, of what the definitions of the new zones are.
Haven't done them yet, that's why.
Right, but so how are we gonna decide what it should be changed to, if we don't even know what that means?
Wait, we, we have a definition of BPD and I one in the ordinance, we have that, we're talking about two zones we already have.
Well, because generally- Yeah. But, yeah, but he's, I'm talking about like mixed use commercial, we haven't defined that.
Right.
We haven't defined mixed use residential, like that kind of stuff.
Right, and we have different residential zones that, are they gonna be the same, or are they gonna be different with, like, things like the size of lots and things like that, because?
I mean, like the low density, that's already defined.
There, well, do, I don't, in the old one, we have, hold on. Yeah, we have low density, medium density, residential, village residential, and mobile home park residential. Are we suggesting that those are the exact ones that we're gonna have in the new one, too?
Still have zones with all of that, that's not gonna change. This map just just shown some new zones, a couple of new zones we created, and they'll be, if we approve it, then they'll be on that map.
Right, but like, there's no R four on that new, future land use map.
Because that's not under consideration.
For a future development.
Yeah, we're not changing the existing things, we're adding some things.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I see what you're saying. All right, thanks.
Okay.
Well, we got a, all got a lot to think about, right?
Yeah, we have a lot to think about.
Yeah, but at the same time.
Hold on.
You're going with this mixed use?
Ron, can you talk into your microphone, I can't hear you.
You can put industrial next to residential.
Mixed use, no, there's a residential co- component and a commercial component, and the commercial component is like this that was proposed, that you're supposed to go, you know, review this, but it's all mild commercial, that lo- that's allowed in C two and C three, but not in C one. There's no gas stations in that one that's being proposed. This sheet that we got, Ron, it, it's a proposed for the, the, uh, commercial, it's those uses that are really mild commercials.
I can get that sheet.
Yeah, I don't have that one either.
Did, did you, did you not send, give us everybody?
No.
Yeah, I sent it.
You sent it, but we don't have it here.
Oh, I got a couple copies. All right, we'll, we'll make sure you get it, just, I'd ask that you read it.
Well, but make sure, I mean, if we're proposing it, let's put it out to the residents, too, I mean.
All right, well, it, it has a list for the commercial component in, in that, like card and gift shops, candy and ice cream shops, catering service, crafter har- heart, all those mild ones, pharmacy, then it had, I had some that have a asterisk after them, that would, you know, must front on a state road.
Well, that's what this is.
So, you're not gonna have a, um, a fire station or a social hall on a, um, on, on a, uh, residential road.
That's what this is. Do you have, do you have this in the audience?
No, I only gave it to you.
Oh, okay, okay. If anybody wants it, um, I hate to do this to you, Jack, but just give Jack your email. Yeah, and he can give it to you. This is just, this basically breaks down, like, what's allowed in R one, so like in R one, you're allowed to have a farm, a single-
Ron, hold on, hold on, Ron, hold on one second.
A single family dwelling, I just don't want us all talking over each other. Conditional use, like, it breaks it down, this is actually pretty easy to understand.
And that's her current.
Yes, this is our current.
Based on our ordinance, it's right now.
Yes.
But I guess my point is, if we're talking about what we're changing it to, and it's not-
We haven't changed anything yet, so we know we have to make definitions, we're not actually looking at anything. So all the stuff that's currently mixed use commercial or residential, we haven't even considered changing. So it's on the proposed one, we're taking little baby steps at a time, and the first baby step is gonna be to look at those areas that Tom circled. So none of those areas that Tom circled need to have a definition that's written as mixed use commercial or mixed use residential, because they're not right now. So what we've done in the past is, we've taken on this huge big thing, and quite frankly, we've made mistakes, because we're trying to do everything at once. So the goal this time is to take a step back and just look at small pockets of areas at a time. Right now, the only things we're looking at need definitions of industrial, or BPD, or what else? Commercial, all of those things are currently defined. So when we get to the point where we're looking at, we'll say, the property off of Muse Bishop that's defined as mixed use commercial, yes, we need to write a definition for mixed use commercial.
Cindy, but to answer Ron's question, he asked about-
I didn't hear his question, can you?
What, what, the, the thing is, all that new mixed use that we came up with, that's all on a R two property, Ron. It, it, it didn't take some commercial and, and roll that into, uh, mixed use. It was, we looked at all the vacant R two property, and that's what was, uh, proposed to be, not all of it, some of it was proposed to be that mixed use. There's still a lot of R two left, and, and the committee came up with-
But let's not get into that, like, I hear what you're saying.
I know, I'm just saying, I was answering Ron's question, he says that, that, uh, are we getting rid of some of those zones? That, that proposed only was gonna change some R two to a mixed use, that's all that was proposed to do.
The map is overwhelming, like by itself, hang on one second, and I'll let you ask whatever you want to ask. Um, the map by itself is overwhelming, so the goal is to not sit here and try to figure out every single piece of this gigantic map. The idea is to break it down into little sections until we can get to the whole map. Make sense? Go ahead. We, multiple hearings, like years worth of hearings. It started as a comprehensive plan committee, um, that had hearings for what, two years, by themselves? And then it came to the planning commission, and they made changes to it, and then it finally came to the board of supervisors, and we probably had two years' worth of hearings on it, so this map has been five plus years in the making. Um, and then was just approved in December? December, is that when we approved it? Yeah, December. So that's how we got to this. So, it's not set in stone, this is proposed, nothing on this proposed map is, like, actually zoned in real life, we're still on the old map. But what Tom's saying, Supervisor Hasiola is saying, is that we need to start making some of those changes. Um, and so that's why he said start, he's having the board members, and I agree with him, look at the little sections and say, like, yes, we agree this should be changed, no, we don't think this should be changed. Did somebody raise their hand in the back, do you have a question? No. Can you just do me a favor, because we are live streaming it, just speak in the microphone? Thank you.
So I guess I was just gonna suggest that-
Yeah, I'm sorry, can you give us your name?
It's, uh, Joe Adiutori, A-D-I-U-T-O-R-I.
Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna suggest that anything that's not gonna change should probably just not be colored, just for clarity, or to use the existing zoning map.
We will, once we go, once we, so if we look at, for example, that area by Muse School, and we decide we're gonna change, um, ABB property and Koski's property, and maybe Yago's property, but we're not gonna change the parcel closest to the school. That will change on the current map to reflect what's ac- what it's actually zoned. So the current map is what the actual zoning is today, if you were to apply for something, what's on there is proposed. As we make changes to that proposed map, it will be updated on the current zoning map. And it will be updated on the proposed map, too, but it will be updated as we agree to make that change, or as we say, nope, we're gonna leave it as is. Does that make sense?
It does, but I think it just would be clearer if we took that map and turned everything off that wasn't gonna change. Do you understand?
But, yes, but that's the whole purpose of the proposed map, the whole purpose of the proposed-
I guess I'm just trying to understand what you're proposing to change, not what you're proposing to keep the same.
That's what we're proposing the township to look like right now. So if, after years of hearings, that's what we came up with is to look like right now. We could, if we wanted to, take a vote in April to make every single one of those changes. We could vote to accept that map as it is, and all the zoning across the township would change. We wouldn't do, I don't think we would do that, right, you wouldn't wanna do that?
I think I know what he's saying, he's just saying, pull out the parts that are changed, like, all that yellow stuff is really pretty much just saying, a lot of it's just staying. He's saying, like, shade out the things in the background that don't matter, so the things that-
Thank you.
We can have Dan do that. The only thing I don't wanna do is, I still wanna see, we'd need a second copy of it, because for me, I'd still wanna see it like this. Dan, did you hear that?
Dan? You wanna see a copy of the map?
No, well, they wanna see a cop, like, basically a comparison between- No, well, they wanna see a cop, like, basically a comparison between the current map and the proposed map, and what actually, what areas are actually changed from, for, from a zoning perspective. You don't need to pull it up, like, you need to do it.
Okay, got it, yeah, we can, that's easy.
Okay.
You're still gonna have to be able to see it bordering properties where you're changing their zone.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the hard part, Ron's right.
Dan, you keep the zoning classifications on the parcels, but just make everything white that we're not touching, and, and everything that's, we're proposing to change, give it a color like you did.
That's why I said I wanna see. Ron brought up a good point, and that's why I said I wanted to see this. The hard part about doing it like that is, we can do one that you can see what needs to be changed, but it helps us to see what the parcels around it are zoned. And if you turn off the color, then you have to make sure you're looking at zoning classifications. Can you talk, and Kara, Kara, you have to stop.
We could, we could use the zoning, we could use the zoning map as a basis, and then draw the proposed changes on the existing zoning map, does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense. Yes, thank you, Dan. Anybody have any other questions? You have to be willing to work on this outside of this workshop, just so that we can get some changes to Jack, um, whether you agree with what the areas that Tom suggested, whether you don't.
I'm gonna see John L. tomorrow.
I just text him while I'm sitting here.
Sorry, I have one more question real quick. So, I don't think the future land use map is technically accurate, if what we're saying is true, because, like there's, like I'm saying, there's no R-4 on there. If we, if something's R-4, is it gonna stay R-4? Because according to this map, there is no R-4. So what I'm saying is, the future land use map, if, if what Tom is saying is true, that things that are the way they are, are gonna stay, except for things that are changing to something different. This whole thing needs to be fixed, because, do you understand what I'm saying?
You're wrong.
Yeah, I think you're wrong.
So you're saying there's not gonna be a R-4 anymore?
No.
Yeah, there is an R-4.
Not what he's saying, yeah, that's not what he's saying. I don't think you're understanding what he's saying.
So there's no R-4 on that future land use map?
There's only one R-4 area that I know of in Cecil Township, and it's off Grange Road, and as those, uh, mobile homes disappear, that reverts, they, they lose that R-4 designator.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a bad example. There's no I-2 on there, but yet we still have I-2, uh, uh, the Weaver Town property is I-2, and, uh, th, this is just proposed changes.
Jack, isn't Kemp's trailer court on Rising North 4?
You're overthinking it.
So you're talking about Jeff's property.
Hey guys, can I say something?
Go, Dan.
This, this is a future land use map you're looking at, it has nothing to do with zoning, all it describes is what you want it to be, in terms of the, oh, the, the ten thousand foot view of that, you still have to decide what zone it fits into. So it's, it's bigger, broader, major categories as opposed to individual, you know, like, like we're saying, I, I think that's what you need to do, you need to take a look at the existing zoning map, where the changes are going to occur, is it gonna be something new, or is it gonna stay the way it is, or is it gonna be, uh, you know, or be the same zone that, or one of the existing zones we already have? We can come up with some exhibits to help, help you through that, I, I feel confident.
Yeah, I guess the only place I-
That's it.
Get, the R-4 thing, to your point, is kind of irrelevant. Where it gets more confusing is, I think there's a big difference between industrial, light industrial, BPD, and-
Kara, we all think that, you're thinking zoning, this is land use. So, yes, we agree with you that those definitions in zoning need to be defined.
Right.
Zoning and land use are two different things.
Right, so, but, go back to your example about Muse, like the, the adjacent to Muse stuff. Are you okay with BPD, but you're not okay with industrial? But right now, there's not showing any BPD on the future land use, so if you say in the future it's okay for industrial, then you're saying it's okay for industrial across the board. You know what I mean? Like, that's your plan for the future, so then what are you gonna change it to?
It was always made clear that this map, we might not change it, so if that shows industrial, that doesn't mean the board's gonna vote to actually change that parcel to industrial. That's what we're here for, for this work session, that was just like Dan said, a, a bird's eye view, but we may not do all those things.
I, I totally get that part, but it indicates that generally, the future of the township would want to have industrial use there, otherwise it's something else.
No, like, we've, we've said that over and over and over again, this is what people came in and want, this is what the committee said, this does not mean, like, this could stay on the map as industrial next to Muse for twenty years, or ten years till we update the map again, and it could never change in real life. This does not mean that we're gonna go and wave a magic wand and all this is gonna happen.
Yeah, I to, I to, I totally get that.
That's why I'm saying, like, I don't wanna keep, like, we keep focusing on things, I really want to focus on the small areas that we're looking at.
Well, I mean, that's one of the areas, right? That's one of the areas that we're focused on, is adjacent to Muse.
Right, and I think the consensus, I, we have to, uh, the consensus of the board is that we're not gonna change it, at least not up-
You're gonna leave it appearing that we want that to be industrial in the future?
No, we are gonna leave it as BPD, at least bordered up to Muse School, but we need to talk to the applicant of the ABB property and see-
But this map isn't gonna change, you're saying?
What?
You're saying this map, you're not gonna change anything on the future land use map next to Muse?
Well, this is what was approved.
That map is done and approved, it's, it's, it's in the comprehensive plan, it's, it is what it is, you can, you can use it or you can't use it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's already approved, so we can't-
So it is what it is.
Yeah.
I got you. That's fine, okay.
Yeah. Right, exactly. It's not, we're not permanently doing any of this. Huh? Yes, yeah, right.
Ten years?
Yeah. I think he just gave you all a homework assignment. Yeah, I mean, we wanna hear from the community, that's why we wanna reach out to the person that owns the ABB property, because we're not guaranteeing that we can do what they're asking for, but we wanna make sure that if we can, that we do, um, because development's important. And if somebody owns, and we'll just use Kara as an example, if Kara owns a property, and we're coming in and wanna zone it industrial, and she wants it to stay residential, we wanna respect that to the best of our abilities. Or if Darlene, I'll just use you as an example, wants her zone's commercial, and there's no reason not to, like, we, we wanna respect her as a property owner. Makes sense? Yeah. Any questions? We all have a lot of homework. You have a question?
Uh, um, two things, if I could. Uh, if anybody wants copies of whatever I, I gave to the board members, just, uh, stop up, or just make sure your email address is on here. I'll send it out to you before you leave, or before I leave tonight. Um, also, uh, just wanted to mention that Gretchen Moore was, uh, voted, uh, first female president of Stra, Strasburg McKenna, congratulations.
And managing shareholder.
That's, uh-
She's, uh, important stuff here.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're very lucky to have her in Cecil. Um, yes, good call, Jack. Any other questions before we end this?
Dan, you good?
I'm good.
Thank you. Darlene?
Dan, you gonna hang on, or do you wanna go?
I can leave, Jack. Good night, everyone.
No, I don't know if you wanna talk to anybody, or, you know, if anybody wants to talk to you, I, I'll leave it open for as long as you want.